Ask Pastor John Woodfield if he can come up and give us a prayer.
I didn't recognize it with the mask on.
I'm wearing my mask because I've come in contact with somebody who tested positive. Although I've tested negative.
They're all leaving.
It's like when you know someone but you just can't place them with that mask on.
It's always a privilege to come and to open up this August body with a word of prayer. Let us all bow. Most gracious and loving heavenly father, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord. For truly this is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad. Lord, we thank you for this nation of which we are a part. We thank you, dear heavenly father, for this state and for the county. We thank you for each and every one of our elected officials. We pray that you would leave them and guide them, crown their heads with your wisdom. Give them, dear heavenly father, your knowledge and foresight to do that which is best, not only for this county but for this region and this state. Lord, we love you and we just praise your holy name. It is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Chair, can you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due courtesy and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I think. All right, first off, we have a couple of agendas I'd like to do first. First is audit, loud and receipt, and spread upon the minutes official will draw a letter from Davis C Newman CPA with Place Williams LaRosa and Company regarding order to withdraw from September 3, 2021.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All in favor of the motions, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Second addenda items, auto-authorized and chance your clerk and a comptroller to seek RFPs for a contracted financial and compliance audit of fiscal year 2021 and '22 from qualified registered CPA firm.
Motion.
Second discussion, all in discussion. Isn't it in coming up on us to expedite this thing? We need to get this done.
Not now.
This is Depper?
This is Depper. This is for the '21, '22. '20, '20, I've talked to Tim this morning and Pam's aware, I think the state is trying to do the final approval of '20, '20. That's the one we're trying to get to.
That's the issue.
So they're gonna try to send us, David Newman, Pilch Williams, try to get with the state this morning and send us a PDF, and then we can acknowledge, receive, and hopefully that will speed up the process.
'21 does need to have some urgency to it because we're behind on the business.
Well, I mean.
So it won't be the same vote.
Same vote.
We can't vote on it today.
No, well, you're gonna.
We're trying to make it available for the first meeting in June for you to make us, the board to make a selection.
Just, I'm just concerned about getting it expedited and getting this done, the issues that we're.
That's what we're trying to do.
And we do have a meeting coming up that we'll discuss with the board. Some of the board members may want to attend on June 2nd. It's a conference call with S and P Global. But you don't have just two board members attend unless you're in the board. Conference call with S and P Global, it's the rating service.
Yeah. Can we get a note, a reminder on that? Because I would.
As soon as it gets arranged, we'll, we'll send it here.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. First up, this audit, now you receive a letter from Biloxi Mayor Andrew Popo-Gillage requesting support from the Harrison County Board of Supervisors for the city of Biloxi requesting him to approve a hazard mitigation project allowing the city to rebuild the Biloxi Lighthouse pier with mitigation money to improve the pier's storm resistance, acknowledging the county is aware of the possible impact of some retrocreational and erosion within the vicinity of the pier, and authorize the board president to execute the letter of support.
Motion.
Second, and again, discussion on this. Is this not only accepting that receipt, acknowledging receipt, but approving that, sending the letter?
I want to.
Maybe there's an issue.
I think there might have been an issue because they changed the footprint of the pier. They're going out with a rock jetty, a certain distance out in the water, pouring a walkway on top, and then doing the pier out from that. It's not going any longer, the same distance. So they were under the assumption that it might be some erosion on the west side of the pier with the rock jetty, similar to what we have at Courthouse Road. But we already have an issue at that location already with motorvaz that sticks out, you know, it gents out a little bit. So we have some erosion at that location as it is. So I don't believe it's gonna give us any more than what's already there.
You wouldn't have a problem with supporting that project?
Not at all.
I'd like to motion include the support of the letter or issuing the letter.
It's included. It's included.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, and keep the letter of support, yes.
Okay, all in favor of that? Motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Let's see. Okay, these we have the consent agenda items numbered two through seven have been placed on the consent agenda, same appearing to be routine, none controversial matters on which all supervisors would like to agree. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item eight, order considered to request of the county of added circuit clerk or bonds for circuit clerk employees.
She had an emergency, and I think I can explain.
Okay.
Kind of what her issue. So because of auditors, we have had for years a million dollar blanket bond for all employees. The auditors came in and said, we can't do that, and they're doing it with most counties, saying we have to have position bonds for various positions as required by statute. So since January of this year, we've put in place 138 bonds that previously were not in place. Thirteen of those have been declined, and a lot of which come out of her office just due to they required higher bonds, the $100,000 bonds, which requires more scrutiny. The underwriters are underwriting those based on credit scores a whole lot more than the lower bonds. All bonds scored on credit. So we have, in our office, expedited the process because her hiring, she's having difficulty hiring folks because of this one issue. We're expediting the turnaround on bonds, but we're also sending her department, we haven't had issues in any other departments, Zerk writes most of y'all's bonds. Zerk's one of the largest bond companies in the world, and they have a little bit more lenient requirements. But we are sending her bonds to other carriers as well to try to see if maybe Zerk won't accept them to other carriers as well, but there's no way that we can get around the credit checks.
When you say more lenient requirements, are we talking about, is it related to the individual?
The individual.
Requesting the bond, what are some of the requirements? What are they doing, looking at their background?
They're gonna look at their background, but it's mostly their financial background, their credit check.
Supposedly, it may not be bad credit. It may be no credit at all. These are young people, so they're hiring sometimes. So when you go and apply for credit, you don't, you've never had a credit card or anything like that.
They don't write.
That's a ding on you, which is amazing that it is. And so some of them may have medical bills, or they may have gone through a divorce, or something that affects their credit. I don't respect my excellent law, but I understand the problem. But Daddy took care of it, of course. Any event, the, you know, that's the part of the problem. It's not just that they're bad, they're not bad people.
No.
They just may have gone through a divorce, or may have had medical problems, or you got medical bills out there, or you may not have any credit at all, just because you've never had a credit.
Can we do some kind of credit counseling, or do y'all offer that?
So the one thing that we are doing is we're sending, we're encouraging them to go to Experian, to go through their credit, see if there's anything that is, that should come off of that, and let them negotiate, you know, with Experian on that, those kind of deals. There's really nothing that we can do from an agency standpoint, other than that. And we are sending them other applications to fill out. Some of the applications are, if they were in the private sector going for a job, they're probably not happy to go through the process, but the process is the process that the state has required. It's not anything the board has required or the bonding company is.
Does Experian charge them?
Not much.
No.
If they charge them, $39.95.
That's just to get your, boy, they need to get with some credit repair company.
All right, I want you to remember that.
That's what I'm.
Most of it, a lot of it is probably resolvable, where they have something that's been on there for 30 years, or 10 years, and they go and write a letter. All you gotta do is write a letter disputing it, and they'll take it off.
Frank, you mentioned something. You said $100,000 or $150,000 on the bond?
She, Connie has talked to, or Ms. Ladder has talked to a couple other counties and said that they don't underwrite unless it's over $150,000 bond. We've talked to every one of our bonding companies. They're gonna underwrite, whether it's a $10,000 bond or a million dollar bond, they're gonna underwrite. It's just the level of underwriting. We handle bonds in several different counties, cities. This, I think this is more of an issue that's unique to Harrison County because the positions that we're, that we're hiring, they can go down the road somewhere else and not be required this. Somewhere else, meaning the private sector, have probably made more money. And I think that's probably more of an issue than this process. We're finding out about this process because previously we had them under the blanket hundred, or million dollar bond. And so there is, from a bonding standpoint, I can't convince an underwriter, don't run a credit check on somebody.
Right. Feel the suspiciousness.
And, you know, the bonding companies, what's crazy about it is they, the bonds are payable to the state, but when they pay all of those bonds, then the person who's bonded has an intent to claw, they have to pay them back. So that's why they're looking at the credit.
Yes.
Because they're gonna go after the person that they pay on the half of. So that's where the credit check comes in. Maybe we need, or county needs to look, because I don't think there's anything the board can do about it because it's statutory. Do we not, you get the AG's offices, they'll, blanket bond, we apply?
We tried to pass legislation this year to allow for blanket bond to apply. It's actually better for taxpayers in Harrison County of what we had in place previous. But if it's not correctly in statute, then they're not gonna deviate. And I, I think what we had previously was a much better system.
And the other thing is that they don't collect cash except for marriage license. Everything else is credit cards.
But the tax collector's office is different. And they got the cash.
They got the cash, everything, and theirs is only $50,000.
Well, it's like SO, you know, every time, their deputies used to be under blanket bond. It's just from an administrative standpoint, it was a much better process because you hire, fire, you have that many employees coming in and out. Well, now we have to underwrite every single one of these, and we have to keep up with it. So administratively, a county like Harrison really should have to go through this process.
Did we not get that under a let alone private, or did you try that?
Probably not.
No. Yeah, we had to, we had to change the bonding requirements. And the bonding limits, quite honestly, are too low for a lot of counties, you know, Hines County, Harrison County, Madison County, Mississippi County.
They haven't been changed in years.
Yeah, they haven't been changed. So that's another reason why I believe what we were doing was much better for the taxpayers. It was less expensive, easier on administration, and provided better coverage.
Frank, as Tim said, there's nothing we can really do about it then.
Yes, sir.
He the media that they don't.
And we'll continue to, in her, I've told our folks, in her department, because I know she's shorthanded, to expedite every, everyone that comes in, and to send it to all markets. And so we're gonna continue, and I'll continue to work with her.
One thing I would suggest is to put that on the application when they apply, that they are subject to.
I think it is.
I think it is.
I need to add that, so.
I don't know about.
No way.
I think it might, I think the only thing the board could probably do is support the efforts to change the law to allow blanket bonds. It doesn't make sense to have all these separate bonds at lower amounts for everyone's single bond.
And I've talked to Senator Hopkin, Hobson, who deals with counties in Warren County. He understands it's an issue. So I think it's just a matter of educating some of the other legislators. They think we're taking coverage away from the state, not protecting the state. But we're not doing that. We're actually increasing the coverage.
And there's no sliding scale on the cost of the bonds depending on the individual's credit.
Yes.
There isn't a sliding scale.
And look, I've had elected officials do, I had unbelievable time getting bonded, as you can imagine, through the state of Mississippi. We've had LOCs, or sometimes our bonds have just been astronomically expensive. So they will offer a higher premium, but if you just have completely bad credit or bankruptcy.
They're not gonna.
Yep. That's, I think that's the issue. We're gonna continue to work. I know she's very frustrated, and I'll continue to work with her in her office to try to explain this.
As you say, she's kind of short-staffed.
Very, she's very short-staffed, and I understand that this is the issue.
So everybody up there has to be bonded regardless if they handle money?
I don't know what the statute.
Their position.
It's based on their position. Sort of any change?
No.
No chains?
I do know what I'm talking about. The main thing is she had very good, capable employees that were already years within the office that were affected by this and to lose their job.
They can't get grandfathered, they couldn't be grandfathered.
You know, who reached out.
That's amazing.
To many people try to help her out.
It's like an insurance thing. They're gonna look at you, and if you're a risk, they, they, whether.
Two of the cases was a bad divorce. The credit was messed up in a divorce.
Have they gone to Experian to try to get some of that stuff? I, as an insurance agent, can't do any of that, but they should be able to.
But they were able, I mean, they were able to get bonded, and then there was one that doesn't deal with money at all.
And that may be something, maybe their title isn't really what they do.
That's what I was.
And if we change the title to what they actually did.
And they won't necessarily.
And then they wouldn't have to have the statutory requirement to be bonded.
Mr. President, the chances of clerks who want coverage, they're able, my employees. In this case, I think it's because the circuit, deputy clerks collect restitution, and it's huge fines, and a lot of restitution has to come in. So that's why they address it this way, I think. It's a theory.
Okay. All right, thanks.
The risk, so the bonding company is great for that type of activity that they require.
And then you, well, come to, you know, everything's paid and paid, you should have a check, now I buy a piece.
Credit.
Okay, item nine is order proven payment of claim listed for the, for Herr King. Items re-removed as recommended by Jacqueline Turner, Eve Harrison County Engineer, Matt Stratton, Emergency Management Director. Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item general order proven selection of Machado Patano Design Group to provide architectural, engineering, and project management services for the new communication office building. RFQs were received May 12, 2022, as recommended by the selection committee of Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission, and approved by the commission at their meeting on May 17, 2022. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Sir.
Discussion.
Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to start off by saying I'm very glad to report that the area of tropical weather that we were watching over the weekend has moved over land now. So not anticipating that to cause us any issues, thank goodness. But thank you also for considering this matter of Emergency Communications Commission this morning. The, as the board director, we did put out the request for soliciting firms who may be interested in the design, architecture, and project management for this project. We did receive the four submissions, and it was reviewed by the panel, and recommendation was taken to the commission last week, and they supported the recommendation of selecting this one of the four solicited that we received back.
Which is?
Of Machado Patano.
Right.
Do you have any questions or providing information the board might be?
I don't have anything further. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 11, order indicating overtime took in the road department per attached list.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 12, order proven payment of claims listed to be paid from the tort account.
Motion.
Sir.
Discussion.
It's me and you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 13, order approving modification to exist in M O U with MG CCC for county training cost reimbursement through June 12, 2022, to include IT training and authorizing the board president to sign the same.
Motion.
Sir.
Discussion.
Yeah, what is this?
What's the modification?
The, the year goes from July through the end of June. We put in monies for training with them to do the drivers' course that we do. So they said that we could come to them with training the employees, IT stuff. So we're gonna, we're gonna have eight classes before June 15. We're just gonna.
How much?
I think it was $800 is what they're going to be giving us on that.
Or a class.
But it's, it's the total.
They only give you a percentage of what your salary is and the hours that you do the classes.
Yeah. Each class will be an hour and a half long. We're gonna be teaching security, we're gonna be teaching basic computer concepts, and at some point, we're gonna be teaching Microsoft Office and other things to the county, to the county employees. Just a way to get a little bit of money for the training on that.
We can't do that in-house.
It's good.
It is in-house.
It is in-house.
They're gonna reimburse them for the, for their time.
It's like what we do with the defensive driving, similar to that. Whenever she does, they do the defensive drive, we get a portion of that, that through, they reimburse us.
We're gonna try to go out and get monies to help us with the senior services also. We'll be doing those strings on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays here soon, in the next few months.
I know, we do that in-house already.
Okay. All right, thank you. There any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I'm just a little confused. We have a personnel department and an HR department, or is it HR personnel? I'm just confused.
Personnel department, HR?
Well, do we have a personnel department?
I don't think we have a personnel department person, having HR department to handle personnel matters.
Would these items be under HR?
That's the same. Listed, they would have to change it in the system. Read as HR. It's just in the system. It's always been.
It's just listed.
Because whenever there's a employment, we're saying on file personnel department, but it's really on file.
Thank you.
So I'm just trying to hopefully get you consistent with the departments.
Right, okay. All right, Chair.
Total, we have 745, 34 misdemeanors, 113 females, 103 that have cleared state arrest, and 35 federal offenses.
Thank you. Next up, item number 14.
15.
That makes it up to about 15. Order proven mileage reimbursement for in-counting travel for the following employees. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 16, order authorizing the president, the board president to execute the lost stolen affidavit, removing the following assets, and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
When you get it back?
No, I mean, we had this discussion before, and I'm just, we're just signing an affidavit that's got no information, it's only attached, I'm sorry, we're just an affidavit. Question is, are you gonna sign an affidavit without enough information on it? They got a report attached, I apologize.
Okay. Repeat the order.
I apologize.
All in favor of the motion?
I'm reading the affidavit, it wasn't an affidavit.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thanks. Item 17 is order correcting inventory, adding back items that were previously still in use per attached list, and authorizing inventory clerk to add back to inventory.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 18, order authorizing disposable assets per attached list, and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 19, order declaring various items junk as per attached list from the Second Circuit Clerk Court District Attorney's Office, and authorizing said department to depose of these assets.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. So they will sell them, or I'm confused why this department's different.
Because they're a state agency, and they're just declaring them as surplus. We'll sell them at the auction, and you'll get the money. And when we sell it at the auction. Thank you.
Okay, all in, any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. What, 19, order declaring various items junk as per.
Number 20. 20.
Oh, yeah. On that, number 20, order acknowledging, acknowledging April 22 credit card statement is filed.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
17.
Order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund with the following work performed. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 22, order proven payment of claim listed. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 23, order designated Khalid Bryan Stockhill.
Stock.
Stock Steel, as Harrison County's representative in 2022 Mississippi deep-sea fishing rodeo package. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
I don't know who she looks.
Second.
Sir.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
The only.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 24, order authorizes 65% down payment in amount of $510.25 due upon receipt of purchase, purchase order to Meditrana Security, with security entry system facilities to maintenance, office to be's road, payable from 001158581.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 25, order amended file ID 220793, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission, approving the application of SOI distribution, and granting a license to operate a freeport warehouse for storage of personal property to be shipped out of state on each calendar year pursuant to Mississippi code, and a needed, as approved on May 9, 2022 for related purposes. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
And with this, too, we noticed after the fact, it was pointed out after the fact that there was no time limit on this warehouse grant, so we amended it, put it five, which the board has done in the past.
Five years.
Five years. They still have to come in yearly to the tax accessory and justify their warehouse calculation, their warehouse calculation, but the board's granted five years, so they have to come back every five years to ask again.
I'll second the amendment.
What is, what is, what are they shipping in and out? And they keep it for a year? What is that?
They're roofing material company. They just located an industrial park last year, so it's a new company.
But it's, it's roofing material, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
And they ship it out? They make it?
Yeah, they make it.
Oh, they make it and they ship it out. Okay, I got you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Is this a curve?
No.
How? Um, true, Development Commission, how is that coming as far as the issues that we were having? Does anybody know?
Like the sales?
They talk about on the seaway. Still, there's, they, I was told that they had, they were gonna do what they were supposed to do.
Well, we need to check on that, cause I don't think, I think it's all-
It's already been a year.
I think they have-
Uh, they told me, they told me they took it off the listings, but I'll check that. I'll, I'll follow up on it.
Can they get that back?
I just didn't hear anything about it. They were gonna check into it and let us know.
They, they, they then, I did talk to Jim, something called me and said that they were gonna handle it and that they were gonna comply with what they had agreed to comply with and they had taken it off the, off the listing. He told us, but I'll follow up on it.
What about the mitigation part?
Well, you talking about the weapons permit? They'll, they'll have to address that. They won't be able to avoid that because they want to apply for a permit.
But basically, they stole that courthouse, flipping it to somebody else.
Well-
And clues those weapons.
What they said was, those are all people that are within the company. And on one of the sales or two of the sales, the address for the company is the same as the address for the people that bought. One of them is not, but I'm verbally told that he is also involved in the development as part of the business.
And also part of the contract by understanding Tim is that that company or whoever purchased that property has to, by June the first, start doing what they said they were doing. If they have, if they do not proceed by June the first, then there's, that's what-
The reversionary.
The reversionary clause kicks in and the property comes back to the us. So they have June the first to do what they said they were gonna do.
Only issue that Jim said that they'd had problems with the city of Godport and the zoning issue.
Well, they got a, Jackie and him went to Dad on the building. They got a new person up there. I think y'all-
Well, I still question my, the zoning even applies to anything with industrial park.
Have you heard anything from them in the city about that?
But, but the difference is here, they sold it to somebody privately is no longer a point. I, I, that's a, that's gonna be a gray area as well than that. In my opinion, industrial park is owned by the county. It's no different with this courthouse. The, while the life safety codes, fire, building may apply, the zoning does not apply. There are A G's opinions that says that, that county zoning is what controls, not the city zoning.
Either way, Tim, before the Development Commission sells property, if zoning is an issue, that should be cleared before the property is sold. It's like we, it's like anybody, if I go out to buy a property and there's a zoning issue out there, I'm not gonna buy that property until the zoning issue is clear, that I, I can use it for what I wanna use it for. So if we, we-
I'm not, I'm not the one telling where to go to see the county. I would tell anything of the county.
Of course, the responsibility is on the, the developer, the person buying the property to make sure the property is on what he wants it on for.
That's correct.
And you need to get that, that should be their responsibility.
I don't think it's the zoning that's the problem. It's self-divided. That's the problem. That's what they're, that's what they're fighting.
The city of Godport is having an issue.
And you have something else.
And that's what I'm told. I don't know for certain, but I-
Still, all that should be cleared and around before they proceed.
So I'll check it. I'll follow up on it. Okay, and we'll see where we're at on it.
Next item twenty-six is order proving assistance for athletic facilities of the Long Beach School District is per the terms of the end of local governmental cooperation agreement between the district and Harrison County.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, motion, motion carries. Order adjudicated employment penalty for Holloman and boss Holloman and associates to represent Harrison County in the location, design, and development of Bucky's convenience store and gas station within the unincorporated areas of Harrison County.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Let me explain to you why this is necessary. That, that obviously if bonds are issued, that's a different issue, but this has turned into a unusual logistical method of how to get this done. And so I, with all that we've got going on, I, I decided I need to talk to Bumper Snow. I've talked to them. I told them I would associate-
Is this in reference to the highway, the bond?
Yep, to Bucky's. Well, that's for, for both the TIF and the highway fifteen million G O bonds we may issue. But really, the complication is that Bucky's wants to build the road itself. And the county doesn't have the money. The county's gonna provide the money, but we're trying to figure out a way that the county doesn't have to pay the project either. There is a way, and we're working on that. We think we figured, they figured it out. I'm not sure I was capable of figuring it out. But I, I, I felt like it was necessary so that they wouldn't be doing all this work. And I told them I would ask the board to hire us and that I would associate them to, and they're doing, they've figured it out a way.
What's the issue with the TIF? Why would the TIF be an issue?
It's not the TIF itself. We're trying to figure, well, I think they've figured out a way that we can do the fifteen million G O as part of the TIF. To, it won't be made by TIF, but you can do the development through the TIF, connect the TIF to the G O bond. Well, otherwise, the county's gonna have to do bids and build the roadway like it normally would build it. And, um, Bucky's thinks they can do it cheaper and faster than they did the problem.
But they need to bid it.
I went into Bucky's on Sunday. It took me an hour to get out of Parkwell.
I know, I forgot. They won't be able to.
It was packed.
Yeah, I saw it too.
I've been there this week and going like a second trip with y'all.
I never seen too many people in one spot.
It was packed this weekend.
Oh, it was packed.
I didn't, I wasn't crazy enough to stop here with you.
Right. Just a little commentary on, on it that directly relates to what you're talking about, Tim. But it's amazing to me that the state doesn't have more on, on this game. They're the ones that's gonna benefit from it.
They'll get all the sales tax.
Harrison County will only benefit from it when they have a lower tax that we gain. Other than that, we're not gonna benefit from it. The state's gonna give you a sales tax. Yet they have no dog in the heart or they don't seem to care about putting one in it.
It's amazing, cause it is a huge sequel development.
Pardon?
Sequel to that.
Well, that's what we're gonna use to help with this, but-
It's gonna be a lot more profitable than a-
Now, the state, state level, their credit did give us a reimbursement on the sales tax. It helps with it. So to their credit with the TIF bond, the state did do that. The legislature did that to help us with that.
If we can connect the TIF development plan, not the TIF itself, that development plan can include Bucky's building the roadway is what the intent is.
The plan itself, not the bond, but the-
Not the bond, the plan. And they, they've figured out, I think they've figured out a way to connect the two where you don't, doesn't have to be a TIF. It's gonna be a G O bond for the same thing.
Tim, is them not, is them not planning on doing a road westbound I ten? Come out of there? Be a westbound exit or not?
Westbound.
From the parking lot?
Yeah, they're, they're approving that whole bridge, adding a lane to the bridge.
Double-aneing the ingress and ingress.
You come out of that parking lot, you'd have a westbound exit and not get back on Minj Avenue to your west?
I don't believe-
I don't look that, that close.
I don't think so, Troy.
It's all the same travel paths, but they are adding lanes in almost every direction.
On fire tile.
And they're widening the bridge across and they're putting like double turn lanes in and out.
Like they have in Long Beach or Alabama.
Yeah, when they built the one in Alabama, the first, they had two lanes exiting the interstate. I've never seen such a nightmare in my life.
I just think about, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm all about a Bucky's. I love going there, but you just gotta think about that exit coming out of there, just like you said. And it's small, Minj Avenue's smaller than that, that intersection over there.
I think they, they learned their lesson with Baller County, the, the Bucky's at Baller Beach Express. And they fixed that intersection, so they now know. The problem is that the traffic comes off and then it's trying to turn into Bucky's, it backs it up.
Can you not have it? Is that by state and you can't have an exit coming out of there going back west?
I don't know.
And that'd be so much easier if you had a, if you had an actual exit out of the parking lot where you would not have to get back on Minj Avenue and just go west. And then going east, you have to get back on Minj to go east. But to have that westbound corridor going that way?
You talking about just an exit?
Just an exit to get back on the interstate. Right. It would be-
I doubt it. I doubt it very seriously, Troy, and the, the-
I'm just thinking about traffic and I, and it's, that-
I don't know.
You never eliminate-
Lot of implications when you deal with the-
Well, I give them credit. They fixed the one in Baller Beach. I haven't seen a problem since they fixed it. I mean, it's, they have now three, three lanes of traffic and have one lane that's dedicated solely to going into Bucky's so that you don't have a track, the traffic backing up together. Two lanes that go to the Long Beach Express and allow you to go south or north. And so it, it fixed that problem. So I think they learned their lesson.
During that period, Tim, if I understand what you're saying, as far as exit off the interstate, Bucky's would have to be on the east side of the interstate to, to have a direct exit off the interstate into Bucky's. It would have to be on the east side of Minj Avenue. Cause to get to the west side, you've got to go across.
Either that or you have to do another exit on the other side of it.
Now, what Troy's talking about, exit out would, would be possible. I don't know if it'd be allowed, but-
They're, they're adding lanes there to make sure that they can, and they are widening the bridge and they're like doing two left turns in and out there.
Okay, that is further discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty, order adjudicating authorizing expenditure as listed as necessary to advertise and bring into paperboard notices opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including the kind of logo being displayed along with the lane displayed in Harrison County online.
Motion. You on twenty?
Yeah, the motion.
First over. On order that you can't get these tickets. You have ten tickets purchasing. You should be purchasing tickets of them.
Okay.
That's only the haven. To make the nomination with-
I accept, I accept, okay.
Can't accept anything.
Sure. Right. Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Is it? Tim, do you have anything?
Um, I hope that Pam, you, you have anything on?
I have two for executives.
I think Pam's got one on there.
One is personnel, um, and the other one is purchasing. Well, they're both kind of personnel.
I got this.
But I do have something else, cause I know we come back. But that was executives.
You have something? Yeah, um-
See what we're going around? Oh, I didn't know. I, I was just gonna say nothing.
Okay. The, the Appleville Police Chief Shannon wants to use the old Biloxi, or excuse me, the old De Appleville Police Station that we went out for bid, we haven't actually sold yet, for one week in mid-June for a training facility. I'd just like to make the motion to allow pending the resolution from the City of De Appleville. He just called me on Friday to see-
In which month, July?
June, I wanna say around the thirteenth, mid-June for one week. But I told him I needed a resolution. We needed a resolution from the City of De Appleville. So can I make the motion to let him use it pending the resolution, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Pam? Okay, I have an additional advertising kind of resources that's adjudicating, authorizing his expenditure as, as we have listed on twenty-eight for the seven annual Sycamore Cell Foundation Golf Tournament, nice Peter Clever and ladies auxiliary. I'd like to advertise the county resources to two hundred and five hundred dollars.
When is it? It's in your discussion. Uh, so it's not a G D K?
No, no, no. It's, it's, that's what it's waiting in.
So is it go directly to the Sycamore Cell medical thing?
I'm not sure.
Fund go directly to it, to research or whatever, or does it go somewhere else that I'm concerned?
I don't have that.
Basically, what I'm saying, what I'm asking is, we're not under discussion, but we'll go ahead. We all?
Yeah, yeah, you have a motion.
If it's, if we're going directly to a research for Sycamore Cell, I'd, I'd support it. But I'm not sure exactly where all the funds going, so I got some questions.
Who did say make the change? I'm gonna nice Peter, Peter Clever.
I'll, I'll look at that.
Anyway.
They didn't do it as advertising kind of resources and advertisement is gonna go along with it.
Yeah, that's what goes on the line. He's got a line.
I got, I got the line here.
It's gonna be a line.
And the more it's worth, talking about Sycamore Cell, honestly.
But anyway, all in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Sue by the Rocko. I got this one ready. Pam?
Um, I sent y'all like, you know, information on the restore I P B money project. And I gave you the list of what they were considering to bring up in the committee meeting that won today. Did, are y'all okay with the three, I think there were three or four beach, beach type projects?
I'm good with the beach.
By just telling you that those four projects-
I don't know, um, about the rest of them.
Yeah, cause we have, there's, there's a beach pavilion, there's a beach that's access park and shade and the expanded country boardwalk and the least turns was one of them.
Well, the least turns are from the beach. That's all of it.
Yeah, just those three.
So just the beach.
Yeah, there were more, but they weren't our, they were not our projects.
And ask them, I know they didn't put it on there, but about the outfalls, that's pretty important. Do something with the outfall, cover the outfalls. Since they didn't ask what our projects were.
Well, these are our projects. These are the three. Yeah, these three projects are gonna carry our projects.
Yeah, but I mean, they could include that, those outfalls, which are huge.
And we don't have to do that wave thing. We can do some a lot more practical.
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 Like what you, yeah, but that would go a long way. They may not have to thought about that.
Any bonus, any bonus, but not those.
To include, covering the outfalls, yeah. Is that huge and they maybe didn't think about that.
That's all. And the two things.
I thought it was too expensive.
Chair, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, we can get a motion and we go into executive session.
Motion, though, in the executive session is against personnel.
Is that one of the-
Yes, personnel.
Purchasing and H R.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Purchasing.
I, I would suggest that we go into a motion to go, I'll make a motion go into, uh, uh-
Close session.
Close session on the purchasing. See what that is before we decide.
Motion go into close session?
Motion.
Second.
Don't need a second.
Okay. All in, okay.
All in say aye.
They did have in the routine. Tim, can you give us an update?
Yeah, of course, it's like a session forward discussing matter of personnel involved with human resources department, no action.
Thanks. Okay, Patrick, we want you to come up and tell us what you got. So what going on with the, with the mail one issue?
So, uh, you know, medical cannabis is a reality that the state has created. And the state law is huge, four hundred and forty-something pages. It really only lists six different business types. I think it's six. I have them all listed and-
And distribution, what else?
Dispensary, disposal, um, processing, growing, and I think there's one other one. So, you know-
That's six of them.
Straight from the ordinance. I didn't change anything with that.
Just had a care, aye. And you can't, as a, you have to choose one. You can't be involved in more than one. That's how it I feel. You can it?
I think you can.
You can? Okay.
I don't think a grower can be a dispensary though. So the facilities have to be located separate from one another.
I can lead you some.
You can't have, you can't have them at the same place.
Right. It's possible. And I, I, I think, uh, everything sold has to be grown in Mississippi. And I think that's a really big deal.
Is that true? Cause I didn't think that one was-
How you, how you, how you tell the difference?
This is gonna be smells bad. Smells like a skunk.
So, uh-
Well, then those urgency, the, the people were telling me- Well, then those urgency, the people were telling me there's a sense of urgency so that the out of state people won't come in. What I'm hearing you say, I can't come in anyway.
You gotta be a resident, don't you?
Well, the investors, so there's professional marijuana organizations. They want to get a foothold here, but the actual marijuana that would be sold medically has to be grown in Mississippi.
I think they can't come. I've got two, three calls from people in Oklahoma, Colorado. So I can't help them, but there's certainly people in other states that are calling and getting in.
There's two types of businesses that we.
But I thought, excuse me, just a minute. I thought you had to be a resident of Mississippi to do it.
I think in order to get it, you're gonna have to be a resident of Mississippi, but I don't think in order to buy it. I mean, to cultivate it and do whatever, you know, supply it. I think a couple of other states here has to be grown here and cultivated. So all that has to be done, they're just gonna create a Mississippi company.
Yeah, that's all, that's one thing, yeah.
There's two business types that call us every day. So, um, multiple calls a week. And there's several individuals that are just anxious to do it. And it's the growing facilities and there's six different tiers of growers. And that involves building a building and, um, you know, installing hydroponic systems and lighting systems and all that. It's very expensive.
And it has to be interior.
Has to be inside. Right. And then, uh, the other type is the dispensaries. I have been looking to see what other things that a dispensary can sell. Like, is it gonna be a convenience store? Can you buy beer and show your medical card and get marijuana? I don't, I don't know. I was not able to answer that question. But, um, in the text amendment that I wrote up, the dispensaries would be allowed in the C two district, the I one district, and I two districts by right. We can also make that conditional use permit, however y'all want to do it. And then all the other facilities require a conditional use permit. Uh, the A one district that has a twenty acre minimum lot size, because we have A one districts.
Where did you get the twenty acre minimum lot size?
For years, we've wanted the A one to really be agricultural and not little parcels. But our zoning, different than other cities, is so large that individual parcels are zoned one way or the other. And so we have tons of tiny A one parcels just outside of the city limits in neighborhoods that would be inappropriate for a growing place. So if we can go to.
In your opinion?
In my opinion.
The A one district in, in Harrison County was kind of a fallback. They, they just threw it in there because they didn't, couldn't come up with another one. I think another one, uh, another type of district would be.
But what about the guy, I'll, I'll just ask you, the one out of Long Beach Industrial Park, that's up to acres?
But the industrial allows two acres for the I one, three acres for the I two.
So their rules are different there.
For different zoning districts.
So I hear you say twenty acres.
Well, agriculturally, you know, if somebody has horses or cows that really need room, so in this case.
But to me, it makes more sense for them to go into the industrial parks.
So I would love it for all the industrial parks.
Yeah, that makes more sense. You think that would hurt us?
You what? No, no, I tell you what.
Cause less problems. See, that's, you got that whole social industrial park up there.
You don't want, you run the problem if you have that kind of stuff on the negative board. Kids are and all that kind of stuff.
So there's two churches in one school in close proximity to, um, the Long Beach Industrial Park. And several people owned property close to the, uh, Saint Vincent de Paul Elementary School. So, uh, they were not able to use that site because the school.
But they ain't nothing around social.
Now, why wouldn't it, wait a minute, running by me again, in the industrial park, because it's close proximity to the school.
But it's a thousand feet unless the school.
You're talking about statutorily, it's, it's forbidden to be located within that distance of a school or church.
In the state.
And so that, is all that property?
No, just one of the properties.
One of the parcels in the industrial park in Long Beach would be excluded because of that statutory obligation.
The one closest to, um, closest to the S B, is it right across?
And then there's a church right there too.
But here's my, uh, deal, is I really wanted Tricia and Tim to go through that with Tricia. To really dissect that thing because I don't want us to require twenty acres and have a battle on our hands that, well, y'all only need two. I don't know. I just see some.
And it's gonna be indoors. You're raising that twenty acres.
If there's no, it makes no sense to me.
Take build a building, like a bunch of buildings on twenty acres.
Which is a big time person.
You're envisioning, I assume, like a farm. I mean, it's not gonna be a farm.
Right.
But I, I don't.
Again, I mean, this is just your suggestions.
Yeah, it has not been to public, it has not been published and it has not gone to the planning.
But you're saying outside of the industrial parks, what, what you're initially proposing was a twenty acre in a, in a zone agricultural.
Well, that probably is not something that needs to be done because it'll be farms.
Yeah, they're indoor facilities. So to me, that's kind of.
You gotta go in with calm, you gotta go in there and pick it and get, I mean, you still gotta ship it out and all that other stuff. Got to have a pretty big size.
It's all indoors. So, but here's my point is, I saw this happen with the casinos and y'all forgive me because that's what I can do. When they first came, we made them leave. Remember, they had to leave. They weren't permanently more. Well, then it didn't take as long until after one hurricane figure out that was a bad, bad idea. Because they ended up blocking all the escape routes for the pleasure boats to get out. So then they let them permanently more, which also turned out to be a bad idea because.
They wound up on the road.
They wound up on the road. They couldn't get insurance. So I guess I'm trying to keep, maybe to keep us from having to go through that again. Is twenty acres overkill? Unless don't start out with something crazy and then have to go back and fix it.
Unless don't start out.
When you said twenty acres, did you have any other reason to come up with that? Were there other ordinances in other states where they already allowed it? Did you have any?
So, um, people want the A one zoning district to get agricultural tax exemption. So our taxes officer's office uses twenty acres as the guideline unless they show a bona fide farm, like Blueberry is usually twenty acres. And then the state also has a twenty acre.
I thought it was ten.
But here's my point. Do we want to allow a cannabis grower to be tax exempt?
Oh, it's not. Uh, most of this ordinance is excluding any type of cannabis business from getting any business incentive from the state.
So the twenty acres wouldn't really apply?
If we, if we allow it on smaller ones, we're gonna have them closer to suburbanous. So a twenty acre is a real farm. I mean, that, by the, by the county taxes, that's during by the state. So that, that was my goal for the twenty acres.
And how many people?
A lot. A lot of people. My Marlowe's got twenty acres.
I mean, the problem with the twenty acres is related to, you're, you're acquainted to agriculture.
What this is agriculture?
This is not agriculture. It's more condensed, I call it. It is agriculture, you cultivate marijuana, but it's not like a foreign that's gonna, has to have at least twenty acres to operate on.
But, but he's the devil's advocate here, if I may. Twenty acres that he's proposing, I'm saying. There's a bunch of those A ones out there that's like two acres, three acres, you name it. And they're probably really located around people, around houses. And that's where we're gonna get the stink from when you start.
You sure are.
Whether it's justified or not, whether it's justified or not, people, there's, there's gonna be an aversion by people living and having that around them. And by what we're saying is if you put, if you really define twenty acres as the minimum size, even in agricultural thing, then you're gonna eliminate some of these, uh,
Close in.
Proposals around houses or neighborhoods. You might, I'm telling you that you might have somebody's A one district right in the middle of a, maybe a housing, uh, on a road. Somewhere where you got a bunch of houses on two and three acres. So be prepared if you, you know, if you allow it by agricultural district without any restrictions, you're gonna get some of that and we're gonna be hearing about it.
But the twenty, you gotta break down and keep, say twenty acres for every operation.
No.
Cultivation is what he.
I agree with you on cultivation. Maybe that, that keeps it away from densely populated areas. Processor wholesaler, transport, testing facility, dispensary, and waste disposal. We're all gonna be getting up against the fence when they start burning stuff.
Yeah.
My neighbors were burning some stuff and I couldn't even go outside of my porch and say.
Yeah, they should call me next time.
You saying the twenty acres is that tall, the six crimes?
I don't know. I think, so what Patrick wants from us.
We smell it when they get out of the car nowadays.
So there's some kind of direction because he's getting phone calls. So my question is, do we want to wait until the Broken Hill finishes their stuff though, which is supposed to be by July one last hour?
This is just matched up to the state legislation. So people will start investing as soon as their clothes to go by. So people are ready to start building right now. And, um, you know, I, I asked that.
I'm not too sure, Tim, that you're gonna, you would also get a lot of complaints from the dispensary side of, where people are coming and getting it. And if you close their neighborhood.
That's, to me, is gonna be bigger.
That's gonna be a. Because you're gonna have trash.
We can absolutely make that a conditional use permit. And so, you know, uh, you know, we do that for a bar. And, and, you know, a ton of other things have conditional use permits.
Well, the rule right now is similar to liquor license.
Exactly.
Permit holders. That's hence the church, the school.
Yeah, all that.
It's only gonna be a big medical condition.
Yeah, everybody's gonna come up with one.
Yep, he can find the condition.
The first time I saw a dispensary in Alaska, it was a little old lady walking in. So I was, I was dying to see a medical store in Alaska where it's completely legal. And it wasn't long haired hippie types coming and going. It was a little old lady going.
Bernie Bachman has businesses in Seattle, Washington, Annabellie. Both of those places, it's completely legal. And it's a mixture now. It is a mixture. It's been people eighty years old and they'll be younger.
Medical marijuana is very expensive. So pot heads are not going to get.
And then you can't buy the papers or the pipes or any of the paraphernalia at the same places as a dispensary. You gotta go to a different building.
You say it's gonna be expensive?
It's gonna be, yeah.
Well, then you're trying to eliminate the black market.
You don't.
People who want to make sure that what they're ingesting is safe and unadulterated is gonna get medical marijuana. But everybody else is gonna trust.
Everybody, everybody else is just getting weed.
And I can.
It's still available.
It's available.
I'm of the opinion that the more you can restrict it, I think as far as the community is concerned, the better off you would be. That's kind of the, we, like Beverly described in Oregon and Washington, that, that's a different type of community than we're dealing with here.
But it's restricted now as well as long as that dispensary, they won't let, you can't have two dispensaries within the same block.
Fifteen hundred feet in the state law.
Because they're real picky about that. You can't buy the stuff to smoke it if you get it smoked. You gotta go somewhere else to get that. So it's separated. Houston, you couldn't buy setups in a liquor store. Twenty years ago, you could go to L and M and buy vodka, as long as you can buy the orange juice. You gotta go somewhere else to get the orange juice. Now you can't.
Those restrictions will be applicable even probably here.
That's what I'm.
In, in the, yeah. But I, I guess from a practical point of view, from a practical point of view, I'd rather have a guy that's won't deal with the dispensary raising hell about our restriction of twenty acres plus, I think twenty acres, and having a bunch of people sitting out here raising hell to because their kids are, in their mind, being exposed to something like that.
Dropping by.
So I'd rather tell him no than them no. I, I, from a practical, from a practical point of view as an elected official.
Because the dispensaries are where you're, you're trapping. They're not gonna be out there. That's just gonna be whoever's working.
I don't think that's.
Patrick Shan opt out. Anybody else opt out?
I don't think so. By St. Louis, somewhere in Hancock County.
I know Patrick Shan did, but Long Beach did.
Long Beach didn't, I know.
Well, that's not too bad because you're not gonna, I was worried about all the cities opting out and it's all gonna be stuck in the county.
But I'm not too sure. We shouldn't go with the more restricted, if you want to define it as that. And heck, if we pick up a problem, we can always amend it, can't we?
True.
That, that's my next question.
Like defense ordinance.
Like any other ordinance, you change it and you go.
So what he's wanting us to do, though, y'all is give him permission to proceed. And I guess my question is, do we want Tim and Tricia to look, take one more look at it? Before we do this, or do we want to cut it?
I guess too, Beverly, but, but he's, but he's, I don't, I don't know. It's zoning.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we just talking about zoning, all the statutory obligations, that's.
We can't be looser than the state. We're just identifying what the state ordinance says in terms of the facilities and entities and then telling the public where they can do it.
Really what Patrick did, he tried to work the, if you like, regular ordinance is all he did. He really made it special.
I guess, Tim, your part in it, legal aspect would be based on what he's proposing in zoning, you see a legal problem with it.
No, I don't see the legal.
You don't think that's excessive and somebody could argue, arguably say we're, we're over regulating it by forcing it into twenty acres?
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, they could argue that, but do you think we can stand that?
Oh, yeah.
Probably could withstand that. I don't think, I think the statute allows the county to adopt.
To the law.
It allows the. The twenty acre thing to me is, I understand it may have some self limiting purpose in that, basically, to rural areas of the county. As opposed to being in the populated areas. So, but again, they don't need twenty acres.
I don't need twenty acres. I think that's a little overkill. What's the state say?
You're talking about population exposure.
It is, it's more of a still have, industrial, conditional areas.
I think there are a little bit of ones who want to propose to build it, you know, that the community distributors of growers.
No, a conditional use permit is good forever as long as they start. If they don't do anything, then it comes back to us.
A lot of times.
Within six months, like a building permit for building.
You're still gonna have, because they're gonna be granted by conditional use permit. The board will have.
No.
Only decision on every one of them.
No conditional use, he said only goes to the county commission unless there's a refund.
Unless, unless there's an appeal. Only an appeal with conditions.
That's correct. I'm mistaken.
Ray Williams.
A rezoning may, but I don't anticipate.
Yeah, that's kind of where I stand. I don't have a problem with what he proposed and other. I mean, there might be some unforeseen problems or consequences to it, but.
We can, we can always change it.
Y'all want to approve it, we could require all of them to be approved of.
Yeah, let's do that.
You what now?
You want all the conditional use permits to come before the board on marijuana? Where you're deciding each single one, like any conditional use permit?
Well, you know, kind of the way I feel about that, Tim, if there's somebody adamant opposed to it and they're, uh, conditionally, your permit is granted, then we're gonna hear it anyway. So why I say all of them? You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree with you. That's kind of. Yeah, I agree with you, that's kind of too much burden.
I'd rather not be involved in all that, less than really, uh, somebody adamant.
How are they gonna know? How are they gonna know?
They're informed by, they're informed by Patrick and him, that they have a right to an appeal.
Ten acres, that's a lot, I think, acres, y'all.
That's right.
Ten acres, you know, tell me about them, ten acres.
Ten acres and everything by conditional use permit?
No.
No. Well, all by conditional.
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Not for the board, but yeah.
Normal conditional use permit, the normal process.
Now, here's my deal, so they want to go to social industrial park, they don't need ten acres, they can just go up there and get whatever's available.
Three acres is the minimum size.
It's only in that, only in A-1 district.
At the I-2, they want.
That's where they need, that's where they need. More dense.
So, ten acres?
A-1 is more dense.
With dense, right.
That's what I like to do.
I-1, which is the Long Beach Industrial Park, has a two-acre minimum lot size, except for that one little subdivision that we did a while back, but we gave variances for that. You know where the sewer treatment plant is? We created six or seven lots on a big parcel next to that.
Yeah, there's all lots in there.
So, that could go, because it was a pre-approved.
And it wants to be next to the sewer treatment plant.
That'd be perfect for pot.
Drowned out.
Couldn't tell which smell was. Yeah.
So, what do y'all want to do? I, I find with Patrick, when he's getting calls, are you gonna bring that back, what you finalized, and let us look at it?
Yep, absolutely, I can do that today.
He's got to have a public hearing, doing.
Well, we have to publish it in the paper, so we're about to publish all of our cases for the June meeting, so I can include this on the June planning commission meeting, but I'll send y'all one on the set of the planning commission today.
You haven't had a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. So, the text amendment goes to planning commission first and then y'all, so at the beginning of July.
But you know what I was surprised, and maybe I'm the only one, I never got a call in reference to voting it out, you know, like City did, never got a call from anyone. No one has expressed any concern or, or.
That's why I don't want to kill it.
Support of.
I got some calls asking me, that's a generation. I've gotten calls about, how do we get in?
Did y'all get any calls about it?
None of one.
I did.
I got a few conversations with some people in reference to, uh, some details.
Get into it.
Yeah, and I got tons.
Yeah, okay. A call in reference to whether we would opt out or not, I didn't either.
They want to know how to do.
They want to get started.
They didn't ask me.
We're just doing zoning. Thank you.
They didn't ask me.
Because they probably knew.
They know what your answer was. That's why they call me Cam, Rebecca.
Well, we got left off that boat.
Most of it is, I think, man.
I don't think it's gonna be that big. We, Patrick, you got any marketing orders?
So, if it's conditional, they gotta come to the board.
To planning commission, not to the board, only on appeal would they go to.
What they sell in the store.
But you're saying commercial.
C-2 district, I-1 district.
What is a C-2?
General commercial.
General commercial, and of course, the, the industrial.
Yeah, and the A-1 district.
But the A-1, twenty acres.
Ten.
Ten. Y'all going with ten?
Y'all with ten, Connie?
It is, that's.
Yeah, fifteen.
Let's split baby.
Fifteen, fifteen would be fine.
Fifty.
Four.
Four. C-2, A-1.
I want it, I.
Patrick, is anything, so you talked about social, you talked about Long Beach.
Encourage them to go into the industrial park.
Yeah.
That's really what I mean.
And they might could get a tax exemption for how many jobs they get.
Our free world warehouse.
That's right. Free world warehouse, that. Is that shipping house?
They might have, but I don't think they ship it out, state.
What?
Other states don't allow.
What is this? Or the. I would think the Seaway. I don't know what you just said. That might be called an interstate something.
The county does have zoning, there's no part.
So, the county zoning map is outside of the city limits, so we don't even have the San Beach, which has some property in the San Beach, but it's not, Cat Island is not a zone.
That just means it's not spousal in general, but it's still in the county, it's not a part of the city.
So, what's the Cat Island?
Official.
How many acres of Cat Island?
I don't know.
I'm guessing, it's a big name, three hundred acres.
I do know this.
It's more.
A hundred, a hundred years ago, it was bloody large than what it is now.
Oh, yeah.
They just have corners on that thing.